Good evening, everyone. Let me call this meeting to order. Meeting of the West Palm Beach City Commission. Today is Tuesday, May 28, 2024, and the time is 5:01 PM. We will start this meeting off, as we do all of our meetings, with a moment of silence. President Ward, could you lead us on the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
Welcome to the United States Constitution, and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Let me just remind everyone of the rules of civility in decorum, which govern this meeting. Officials shall be recognized by the chair and should not interrupt the speaker. Public comment shall be addressed to the City Commission as a whole and not to any individual on the dais or in the audience. Displays of anger, rudeness, ridicule, impatience, lack of respect, and personal attacks are strictly prohibited. Unauthorized remarks from the audience, stamping of feet, whistles, yells, and similar demonstrations should not be permitted. Please govern yourselves accordingly, as offenders may be removed from the meeting. Also, any person desiring to address the Commission shall complete a comment card for each agenda item the person wishes to address, and the comment card shall include the person's full name and address and the numbered agenda item. If the card is not completely filled, then the person will not be recognized. Thank you all. Madam City Administrator, are there any additions, deletions, reorganization of the agenda?
No, Ms. Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. We'll now move to item 6.1, proclamation. Proclaiming the week of June 3 through 7, 2024, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. Code enforcement officers provide for the safety, health, and welfare of the citizens in this community through the enforcement of building, zoning, housing, animal control, fire safety, environmental, and other codes and ordinances. Code enforcement officers are responsible for improving neighborhood and the quality of lives of its residents in and the community. Too many times, efforts of code enforcement go unnoticed, even after code compliance has been accomplished due to their efforts and expertise. Code enforcement officers are dedicated, well-trained, and highly responsible individuals who could take their job seriously and are proud of the department and the local government within which they serve. The Florida Association of Code Enforcement has declared the first week of June to be set aside by local government to honor and recognize their code enforcement officers. The City of West Palm Beach encourages all citizens to join in expressing appreciation for the dedication and outstanding service provided by the individuals who serve as our code enforcement officers. Therefore, I, Keith A. James, Mayor of the City of West Palm Beach, do hereby proclaim the week of June 3 through 7, 2024, as Code Enforcement Officers Appreciation Week. Here to a night to accept this proclamation is Assistant Police Chief Anthony J. Spitera and Solid Waste Compliance Supervisor Joseph F. Aliva.
who I think is the front line in combating the, or enforcing the broken windows theory and making the city a better place, I thank you for your recognition.
Now, turning to the agenda, we have a few appointments, Commissioners, starting with 7.1. City Commission approval is requested for my reappointment of Janie O. Peters to the Civil Service Board for a term of three years to expire on April 6, 2027. Ms. Peters has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and City Commission approval is required for her reappointment. Could I have a motion, please?
Mayor, I move approval of Ms. Peters' reappointment, recommended and is recommended because of her dedicated experience and knowledge of human resources.
Thank you very much. It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. City Commission approval is requested for my reappointment of Andres A. Paradello to the Planning Board for a term of three years to expire on May 21, 2027. Mr. Paradello has served over the maximum allowed number of terms, which is three, and therefore, City Commission approval of his reappointment is required. I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of Mr. Paradello's reappointment and is recommended due to his expertise as a landscape architect and his dedication to service.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. City Commission approval is requested for my reappointment of Suzanne Turner to the West Palm Beach Housing Authority for a term of four years to expire on May 7, 2028. City Commission approval is required to confirm Ms. Turner's appointment.
Mayor, I move approval of Ms. Turner's appointment and is recommended due to her personal experience working with governmental agencies in Washington, D.C., including housing and urban development.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Now, Commissioners, we will turn to the consent calendar. Items 8.1 through 8.3. Any questions or comments on consent? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, I move approval of the items on consent.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 9.1, Resolution Number 115-24, approving a lease agreement with Esperanza Community Center to lease city-owned property located at 723 39th Street. Ferrell?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Commissioners, members of the public. Jennifer Ferrell, Housing and Community Development Director. The City of West Palm Beach owns property located at 723 39th Street, particularly on, next to Pinewood Avenue, adjacent from the Boys and Girls Club. And the property, since 2020, was occupied by North and Rise. However, as many of you know, North and Rise is now focusing their services in the Coleman Park neighborhood, and so, they did reach out to the city earlier this year, and they had decided to terminate their lease effective April 1 of this year. So, the property is currently vacant, and/or around that time, the city also received an application by the Esperanza Community Center to occupy the facility, in essence, to provide services to Latino residents in the North End neighborhood. And as staff was considering the possibility of the Esperanza Center occupying the space, we wanted to ensure that we looked at considerations detailed in the city's real property lease management policy. This was an ordinance that was established and passed early, or in 2019, and the purpose of that policy was so that we had standard processes and procedures for how we evaluated either the lease or the rental of any city-owned property, obviously outside of facilities such as fire stations, police stations, or whatnot. And in this specific policy, there are provisions that allow for the city to lease property to nonprofit providers that are providing any sort of human, social services in the city. And there is specific criteria and a detailed application process that we, at staff level, review before it is brought forward to you for consideration. I want to spend just a little bit of some time just talking about that specific criteria, and I know there's a lot detailed on here, but I'll try to be as quickly as possible. I just want to make sure that the governing body and that the members of the public have an understanding of what it is that we are looking at. So, obviously, of course, we want to ensure that there is the level of appropriateness for the proposed tenants in respect to the public benefit that is being provided, the long-term planning goals of the city, and any conformance with the city's strategic plan. We want to make sure that what is being provided ultimately is that there is a need for any housing or human or social services provided by the agency in the leased location. We want to ensure that there are quantifiable service objectives that are going to be achieved by the organization and that they are in relation to any of the city's goals and/or objectives. We review the capability and the expertise and experience of the organization, the location of the actual property as it relates to being able to serve their targeted clientele. We look at their financial feasibility, as we want to make sure that they are able to perform their lease obligations as it relates to being able to pay their proposed rent, perform their lease maintenance obligations, obtain the appropriate insurances, and then we also look at other specific considerations as appropriate or as detailed by the City Commission. At this time and before we discuss the proposed lease terms that have been negotiated with the Esperanza Center, I'd like to ask their Executive Director, Maricela Torres, to just come up and share a few words in terms of the organization and what type of services they provide in our community.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission, and City Administrator Fay Johnson. My name is Maricela Torres, and it is my pleasure to be here tonight. It has been five years since we first opened our doors in 2019 to serve the Hispanic community living in the North End in the City of West Palm Beach. We started out with a small office, and we have now, we're now operating out of 920 square feet, so barely 1,000 square feet, with a rent that is astronomical, and however, we have never failed to pay our, meet our financial responsibility with our tenant, I'm sorry, with our landlord as a tenant and to our community. We started out by offering services to the day laborers that work on the corner of 44th and Broadway, and we have expanded to serve the community by offering classes such as adult literacy, English classes, family programming, computer classes, financial literacy classes, and so much more. I hope that you will consider our application for renting this property, which will be a big, it will make such a difference to the community that we serve. If you have any questions for me, please let me know. Thank you so much for your consideration.
Thank you. Any questions, comments on the Commissioner Warren?
I'd just like to say that I have known Maricela Torres for close to 30 years and have seen her move from a very compassionate place to serve people that have been underserved, and there has been a huge gap in the services that were provided and that were recognized as needed, and I really applaud you for stepping out with little backing when you began this project, to see the work that's happening now and to look forward to what I believe Esperanza can do with the proper support. And also, knowing Sylvia Moffett, the President of the Board, and we all know that Sylvia has a huge servant heart, and I'm looking forward again to seeing what can happen with Esperanza.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert?
I want to echo those comments and just say it's been phenomenal to watch you grow this organization over the past few years, and, you know, I wish that we had unlimited resources to help all organizations, but it, I know that the organizations that come before us are well-vetted and are really moving the needle for our community, and I'm proud to support this effort today. Thank you.
Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much for all you do. I think, as a city, we have to have partners such as you to be able to handle the things that we aren't able to handle ourselves, and it has been amazing to see the things that you've done over the past five years. I think I visited you at the beginning of COVID, and just to see the number of people that you've helped since then and the number of times you've called and asked for, you know, suggestions and, or I've called you for suggestions, and it's just been fantastic to have this kind of partnership, and I look forward to what you continue to do. I'm so glad that we're able to help move you into this space and can't wait to come visit. Thanks.
Okay. We'll return now. Ms. Ferrell, you want to continue or presentate? Thank you again, Marissa.
So, after reviewing the application, staff was able to negotiate the proposed terms, and these are a high-level overview of what is detailed in the lease agreement. So, the term that is being proposed is a five-year term. The term that is proposed is a five-year term, effective June 1, 2024, so later on this week. The base rent for year one will be $15 per square foot or $1,200 per month. In accordance with our real estate management policy, nonprofit organizations must pay no less than 35% of the market price. The $1,200 monthly, that is 35% of that market price. And rent will commence on October 1, 2024. It will allow the organization some time to move into the facility and to be able to get, you know, whatever other items they may need in order to begin their operations. There will also be 3% increases annually for years two to five. The organization will be required to provide two months' rent upon execution of the lease, and that will be a security deposit that is paid back at the end of the lease term. But tenant will also be required for maintaining the premises in a safe and sanitary condition. They'll be required to pay for all utility and/or maintenance costs incurred with the operations of the facility. They'll have to be, they'll be required to carry specific insurance and other insurances needed in order for them to perform good business practices, and they will also be required to provide quarterly performance reports that are going to support the public service objectives that they have identified in their agreement. I know it's a lot to see, but just an overview, and I think this is the first or one of the most extensive beneficiaries or public service objectives that we've seen in any lease agreement. But the organization is committing to English classes, computer classes, fitness workshops, multiple babysitting or childcare service programs, immigration services, Christmas toy drives, and various volunteer opportunities throughout our community. And again, all of these objectives will be provided on a quarterly basis to Housing and Community Development Department, as we will be monitoring and overseeing the lease agreements. So, in accordance with Section 23127 of the City's Court of Ordinances, any leases with a term of five years or less may be approved by a resolution, hence why we are here today, and staff respectfully request approval of such resolution, allowing for execution of the agreement with the Esperanza Community Center. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Thank you for that presentation. Any questions, comments? Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you so much. That is certainly wonderful to see all that list of community services that will be provided. I appreciate that. I just want to make sure we're not being too prescriptive in a lease agreement, that if they want to change some of their services, if the community needs change, that they're not locked in to providing those.
These are estimated services and beneficiaries, but they're not locked into, I mean, those specific programs. This is just an overview of potentially what it could look like in terms of the reporting mechanisms and what they'll be providing on a quarterly basis.
Okay, great. And then, also, had one question for the applicant as well regarding Maricela. For the Boys and Girls Club that's nearby, can you talk a little bit about, do you have a relationship with them? Do you all work together? I think that, you know, if we can get our nonprofits working together, that would be wonderful.
Thank you, Commissioner Lambert, for that question. In fact, yes, we have partnered with the Boys and Girls Club for many years now on various different activities that they have initiated, and we have supported them, as well as speaking to our community and the parents to encourage them to also sign them, sign up their children for the services that the club offers. We also participate in Pinewood, the Pinewood Day, where it's held at that location, and I feel that we have a really good relationship with the club. We try to establish good partnerships with others because we can't do it all on our own.
That's wonderful. Thank you. I just think it's great when our organizations work together so that we can serve more people, so thank you for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Commissioner Fox?
Thank you so much. I was wondering if you could talk a little bit about the market rate price and where that comes from? Is it just, I mean, obviously, they're doing amazing things for the community, and I know that we have our ordinances in terms of the 35% of market rate, but, you know, I would always want it to be easier for them to have the resources to give to the community rather than to have to pay rent, so I'm just curious if you could talk a little bit about who, where the market rate comes from or what do we base it on?
Right. So, thank you, Commissioner, for that question. Every time that we come forward and we present a lease, Housing and Community Development, we do have a third party conduct and complete a third market rate analysis. So, there is an analysis that's conducted. We've hired Anderson and Carr, who does a lot of our appraisals, and they're industry experts and leaders in that industry, and so, they provide the market rate analysis for us. We review it, and we adhere to what is detailed in our policy, which states that no less than 35% of that market rate, which is a huge reduction. I'll tell you, the organization, they're, as Maricela had stated, they are currently paying over $2,700 in a 900-square-foot location. Now, they're going to be in a location paying $1,200, and it's about 2,700 square feet, a little bit over that. So, this will be a huge improvement for them and their ability to provide the programs and services.
Any other questions or comments? Or we do have a card. Sandy Makovich?
Sandy Makovich, West Palm Beach. I'm going to read from your agenda. The Esperanza Community Center provides services and programs to empower families primarily residing in the North End area of the city to thrive by developing life skills. The agency offers a safe space for the community to receive information and services, including English as a second language, adult literacy, and computer classes, health outreach and education, pro bono legal services, health outreach and education, family programming, cultural events, and a food pantry. The community center serves over 280 individuals and over 150 children benefit monthly. Then it says, "The property can be effectively utilized by a nonprofit provider of housing, human, and social services." So, they're nonprofit. They got no money. They're going on contributions, I assume. So, why are you people, in year two, charging them $14,832 annually, year three, $15,276 annually, year four, $15,744 annually, and year five, $16,212 annually? You think that's a little excessive for nonprofit? When they're basically doing stuff that you, the City Commission and the mayor, won't do. Try to adjust that figure. Give them a helping hand, will you? Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions or comments? If not, I will entertain a motion.
Mayor, I happily move approval of Resolution Number 115-24.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item 10.1, public hearing and second reading of ordinance number 5102-24, modifying the annual salary for the mayor and city commissioners pursuant to Section 2.02 of the City Charter. Ms. Johnson?
Good afternoon, Mayor, Commission, members of the public. For the record, Fay W. Johnson, City Administrator. There have been no changes since first reading. Staff recommends board approval.
Thank you. Any questions, comments for Ms. Johnson? Hearing none. We do have a card. Sandy Makovich?
The city administrator, where'd she go? Compared West Palm Beach to Orlando, St. Petersburg, and Jacksonville, Florida. Orlando population, 316,081 people. St. Petersburg population, 261,256 residents. Jacksonville, Florida, 971,319 residents. West Palm Beach, 120,932. Commissioner Fox said she would look, this is at the last meeting. Commissioner Fox said she would look to hear from constituents now that the pay package has gotten preliminary approval. That draws a response from James, who says he hoped she wouldn't conduct a poll on the topic. Some decisions just have to be made on data and not on public opinion. Keith, what happened to, we want to hear from you. You want commissioners voting on skewed data from your city administrator. Ms. Johnson? City Commissioners, a new contract will soon be due for our first responders, police, and firefighters. Make sure there is ample money to give them a decent wage. Please vote no on a 32% increase for you people. Honest to God, I can't see where one of you is worth it. Think about it.
Thank you very much. Any questions or comments? Hearing none. I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of ordinance number 5102-24 on second reading.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved to second. Discussion. Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like, sign. Hearing no opposition. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor?
Item 10.
Mr. Mayor, I need to read the title of the ordinance.
What? Oh, that's right. It's an ordinance. I'm sorry. Yes, yes, please. Please read the ordinance.
Ordinance Number 5102-24, an ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, establishing the annual salary of the mayor and the commissioners pursuant to Section 2.02 of the Charter of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, repealing ordinance Number 4610-16, providing for conflicts and separability clauses, providing for an effective date, and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye. All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Okay, item 10.2, public hearing and first reading of ordinance number 5101-24, a privately-initiated request for a text amendment to the zoning and land development regulations to allow the sales of golf carts in the transition sub-district of the Northwood Mixed Use District, N-M-U-D. All right, who's doing this? We usually hear from staff, right? Okay.
Good evening, Mayor. Commissioners, I'm Gregory Doe. Want to present my business, Scorpion Rides, where I sell golf carts, electric bikes, something different for the city. I have four different models of golf carts, two-seaters, four-seaters, six-seaters. The area in question is 2405 North Dixie, which is in the Northwood Mixed Use District. The area didn't call for electric vehicles or motor vehicles at the time, right now, so I'm actually asking the commission to change the amendment to provide me to use the area for selling golf carts. Right now, the ordinance, 5101-24, it hasn't been addressed in over 30 years, and for me to be able to sell the golf carts and electric vehicles in that area, I would need permission from you guys to allow me to do it. I've done some research in the area. The minimum site required is 1,000 feet. I won't have any area for vehicles outside. It's just going to be a showroom, and the benefits of it is options for traveling for citizens. There are no other golf cart businesses in the area, provides growth and innovation, and there's no negative impact on the community. I've already developed some for the police department. We're now using golf carts and electric bikes in the area. It's been a big help with downtown. That's about it. I have nothing else.
Very good job, Lieutenant. Thank you. Very good job. Okay, any questions for the applicant before we hear from staff? All right, staff, let's say ye.
Just moving here really quick here. Let's bring the PowerPoint slides for the staff. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. Louis Centini, Senior Planner with the Planning and Zoning Division, presenting the request from the applicant to allow for golf cart sales in N-MUD permitted use table. So the final item, number 10.2, is a privately-initiated request for a text amendment to the zoning and land development regulations. Article 4, Section 94-210, Table 7-9, Item 87, and to Article 4, Section 94-273, extra requirements for special use or permitted use to allow the sales of small recreational vehicles within N-MUD transition sub-district. The applicant proposed, as he referred, for the sales of electric golf carts in a 1,200-square-foot commercial property located at 2405 North Dixie Highway. The proposal only impacts properties located within the N-MUD transition sub-district. On April 16, 2024, the planning board meeting unanimously approved 6-0 vote for approval of PBK's number 1978 for the zoning and land development regulations, text amendment for the N-MUD permitted use table. And according to the analysis findings, staff deems the request efficient and supports proposed text amendment to change Article 4, Section 94-210, Table 7-9, Item 87, and to amend Article 4, Section 94-273, extra requirements for special use or permitted use to permit the small, to permit the sales of small recreational vehicles within the, within additional requirements within the transitional area of N-MUD. Additional application requirements will be added under motor vehicle sales and rental establishment on Table 7-9, Item 87, to allow the sales of recreational vehicles. Minimum site dimensions will be allowed for 1,000 square feet, and no outdoor display for sales or rental of motor vehicles will be allowed. That concludes my presentation. Any questions, comments, concerns?
Thank you very much for that presentation. Commissioner Fox and Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. I wasn't here for agenda review last week, so this might have been discussed, but are we talking about only the sales of these vehicles or also the use of the vehicles?
It's just the sales, just the showroom.
Okay, and so, do we not allow sales throughout the city? Is that, we don't allow the sales of golf carts or the use of them, or?
That area specifically wasn't zoned for it.
Okay. Or do we allow the use of them?
Yes, any vehicle that's under 35 on the street, 35 and under, you can have it legally registered and drive down the street, yes.
Great, well, it sounds like a great idea. I'm glad that you thought of it, so I support this. Thank you.
Commissioner Lambert?
Thank you. Similar questions, maybe for our planning staff. I appreciate that if we haven't looked at this in over 30 years, maybe we're looking at it again. I'm curious why, if you can look back in time, why we wouldn't have allowed this in this area? The sales?
That's actually a great question, Commissioner. I can definitely get back to you on that. Maybe?
You may have some help approaching.
Yes.
There you go.
Angela Van, Planning and Zoning Administrator. When we wrote, originally wrote, N-MUD Mixed Use District, we only allowed motor vehicles sales along, I think it's Greenwood, in that industrial area, because that's basically what's industrial, where you can sell cars. And Northwood was more of a pedestrian-oriented type back in 10 years ago when we wrote the regulations. And basically, the way our code is today, everything is left on the one category. We don't have separate categories. So when the applicant came forward, we basically wrote it so we can pull it out, allow motorized the vehicles sales, and still prohibit some of the uses that originally were not wanted in Northwood, but still allow golf carts, some, I think it's doom buckets and other things like that, under that category. So that's why we did it this way, because the way our code is written today.
Interesting. I guess we didn't foresee the use of these being so popular and something that people might want to use on a regular basis, and I guess with that line of thought, you know, I hope that we, presuming this will be a successful sales area and business, that we make sure we educate residents and owners on how to use them and where they're, where they're allowed and where they're not.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
Mayor, move approval of ordinance number 5101-24 on first reading and schedule the second reading on June 10, 2024. Said ordinance amending sections 94-210 and 94-273 of the City of West Palm Beach zoning and land development regulations to permit the sales of small recreational vehicles with additional requirements within the transition area of the Northwood Mixed Use District, N-MUD, as the amendment is consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city and meets the standards for amendment in section 9432 of the code.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Discussion. Hearing none. Madam Clerk, can you read the ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 5101-24, An Ordinance of the City Commission of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, amending the Code of Ordinances of the City of West Palm Beach, Florida, at Chapter 94, Zoning and Land Development Regulations, Article 7, Special Districts, Section 94-210, Northwood Mixed Use District, Table 7-9, Retail Services, Item 87, Motor Vehicle Sales and Rental, No Service Enclosed. In Article 9, Extra Requirements for Special Uses or Permitted Uses, Section 94-273, Item 49, Motor Vehicle Sales and Rental Establishments, No Services, to permit the sales of small recreational vehicles with additional requirements within the transition area of the Northwood Mixed Use District, declaring this amendment to be consistent with the comprehensive plan of the city, providing a conflicts clause, a codification clause, and a separability clause, providing an effective date and for other purposes.
All those in favor of the motion say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. Hearing no opposition, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. It is now time to turn for, that concludes the agenda items, who will now turn to comments from the public. And I have several cards here, and I recognize that a number of people are here to address the issue regarding the Harriet Himmel Building, and I wanted to say a couple of things before we get into it, and I also want my city attorney to weigh in. First of all, and I'm just trying to hopefully establish a level playing field with respect to the facts. I have had an opportunity to review the changes to the building that were proposed, that are being proposed by the developer, $20 million of changes to the building, and I have to say that they do maintain the character of the building. And I understand the developers met with several of the community leaders, showed them the plans, the renderings, and I believe has received some acceptance and consent of those community leaders. The changes are relatively minor. In fact, 25 years ago, more significant changes were made to that very same building. In fact, the area where Bellagio Restaurant used to be was, used to be part of the Harriet Himmel Church. It was where they conducted Sunday School. That whole area was basically demolished and rebuilt. But in addition, the first floor area, where now a lot of retail is on the ground floor, used to be the Starbucks over there and other retail shops, that used to be the church basement. And 25 years ago, the building was reconfigured so that the basement was filled in, and now everything was put to gray. And the original stairs of the building were also removed. So we're talking about a building that has already undergone significant changes over the years, and under the plans, the building is not going to be demolished. There are some revisions to the staircase and a couple of windows, so, and I would, looking forward to hearing from the public, but I would hope that as we are discussing this issue and as we move forward, that we're basing it upon actual facts and not disinformation. Also, Madam City Attorney, can you weigh in? And the final thing is, all of the changes being made are consistent with the standards of the U.S. Secretary of the Interior, which is what the developer was, developer was contractually obligated to do, that was deal that was struck with the city years ago. And so these standards are being met. But Madam City Attorney, can you discuss, or at least weigh in from your legal analysis of the flexibility of this board?
Certainly. As you started to allude to, Mayor, the development of the Harriet Himmel Theater is regulated by a resolution that was most recently amended under Resolution Number 9-22. It was approved by the City Commission on January 24, 2024. And in that document, under the provisions that talk about the Harriet Himmel Theater, it specifically provides that the redevelopment of the Harriet Himmel Theater shall comply with the Secretary of Interior standards. Even though that iteration was done in 2024, the redevelopment of the Harriet Himmel has followed the development orders that are applicable to that building all the way through since its inception. So these development regulations are vested rights of the property owner. Once adopted, the development regulations become an amendment to Chapter 94207, which is the chapter that's applicable to this particular development. Because section 94207 is controlling, owner's consent would be required to designate that building historic or to landmark the building under Chapter 9448. Without the consent, the Historic Preservation Board, or this body, would not apply or to designate the structure without also violating the code and the development rights and regulations that were adopted previously by this body.
Thank you. Madam City Attorney, can you elaborate a bit about what was agreed to? There seems to be some misinformation about what was agreed to at the meeting of the Historic Preservation Board?
I reviewed the tape of the Historic Preservation Board. There was not an agreement. At public comment, one of the citizens came up and made a plea to the board to designate the structure. In a summary, my recollection of the motion that was made was that the, that the city staff initiate the process to designate and come back with a report to the board, but the process for initiation is not a report, it's an actual application. There's not been an application for designation filed by anyone at this point. But it's my understanding that staff will go back to the board and report what its findings were. Part of the findings was a memo from me to the Planning Department. My understanding is the Planning Department has shared with the chair my opinion as it relates to the applicability of 94207, as it relates to what the development requirements are for that particular development.
Okay, thank you. No, no, we have time, we have time for comments, we have time for, okay, if you filled out a card, you're out of order. If you filled out a card, you have a chance to speak.
But she's talking about me.
Ma'am, ma'am, if you're out, if you continue to speak, you're out of order, we'll have you removed. So at the end of the day, the, at the end of the day, the building is not going to be demolished, and so it will be preserved. So now let's turn to the cards that we have here. I'm going to call out four names. If you could start making your way toward the podium, as I call out your name. Kathy Savage, Amy Triggs, Dennis Perry, Marjorie Ansura. Kathy Savage, please. Ms. Savage?
Yes.
You may begin.
Hello, my name is Kathy Savage, and I live here in West Palm Beach. I'd like to talk about widespread election fraud. It used to be called Election Day and not Election Month, which opens the door to election fraud. There is no canvassing board witnessing thousands of ballots being duplicated as required by Florida Statute 101.68. I'd ask, why are they duplicating our ballots? Let's see. Absentee ballots were reserved for our military serving overseas and stationed in another state. Now it's widespread, which opens the door to election fraud. The post office has zero chain of custody and open bins. Any thinking person would never send valuables through USPS. This opens the door to election fraud. Only registered citizens are able to vote in American elections, but we see our public servants automatically registering people to vote through the DMV, and that includes non-citizens, which is election crime. In 2020, Georgia had 300,000 more votes than voters. In Michigan, there were 4.5 million registered voters but got 7 million votes, and they certified that. I bring these two cases because they're the quickest and easiest way to explain in my three minutes. That, my friends, is election crime. Approximately 20% of voters actually vote, and not nearly 100%, and certainly not over 100%. Now, we are told that it is upon request only. I ask then why 14 pallets, full of ballots, came back this election cycle right here in Palm Beach County? That's election crime. Professor Halderman hacked voting machines within seconds in Georgia courtroom recently, changing votes from George Washington to Benedict Arnold, proving they are easily hackable. We are forbidden to see or audit these machines, which clearly shows we have several Benedict Arnolds. In other words, criminals, who forgot that the elections, the equipment, the building, the ballots, and everything else belong to we, the people, and not our public servants. So I have seen personally them changing ballots because they'll have the person's actual ballot and a blank ballot, and the machine's choices on the blank ballot highlighted in green. Why is that happening? And then I saw the girl changing the voter's intent. She was changing the votes. She was changing the votes. This is very alarming, and all we get are looks like cows at a passing train.
Thank you very much. Amy Triggs?
Hi, good evening, Commissioners and Mayor James. My name's Amy Triggs. My husband and I have lived in an old Spanish house built in 1923 for over 30 years in Southland Park, which is just a couple miles south of downtown off of Flagler. We've raised our three kids and many a rescue dog in our home. What drew us to the neighborhood were the unique and beautiful old homes with lots of character. We couldn't imagine living anywhere else. What I love about my neighborhood and north of Southern is that it is a designated historic district, so the houses, for the most part, cannot be torn down or renovated in a way that would change its character, unlike south of Southern, where homes are getting torn down left and right, and overgrown boxes with no charm are being built instead. With my neighbors, I've actually fought and won against lots being subdivided on my street because it would change the landscape and character of the street in a negative way. We won, and we actually, they were only asking for a one-inch variance, but we won because thankfully, the Historic Preservation Board agreed that we need to maintain the integrity of our old neighborhoods and not allow them to be altered just so someone moving in can make more money. I'm not opposed to development, but I am when it's to the detriment to the longtime cities, cities' longtime residents, and when it will destroy this city's charm and history. City Place was built around this beautiful historic church, and it is an integral part of our city's rich history. By not giving it an historical designation means anything can be done to the church, including demolishing it. Just because the developer says they will do something doesn't mean they're actually going to do it. What they say is just word salad. By giving it an historical designation doesn't mean it can't be renovated and improved upon. It just means that rules and regulations need to be followed in making those improvements, just as my husband and I have had to do in the last two renovations of our home and countless other residents have done in their historic neighborhoods. Mayor James, I heard you on the radio a few weeks ago, and you specifically said that West Palm Beach will not become a mini Miami or mini Fort Lauderdale, and that West Palm Beach will never lose its charm under your administration. Personally, I think it's already heading in that direction. But let's listen to you and your words. Let's not lose the charm of City Place, and let's keep the church as its focal point and actually respect the church's architectural significance by not allowing for it to be changed or destroyed in any way. Please give the church the historic designation it deserves. Thank you.
Dennis Perry?
My name is Dennis Perry, 2502 Georgia Avenue in Historic Sunshine Park. I'm here today to ask you to support historic designation for one of our local treasures, former First United Methodist Church, later repurposed as the Harriet Himmel Theater. It's a property whose significance is both historical, cultural, and architectural. It's a 98-year-old structure, which is one of the finest examples of Spanish colonial revival of the period. It should be designated historical because it's a contributing property that meets all the criteria of such a designation. However, substantive changes or alterations to exterior of the building, such as demolishing the north face of the building by removing the beautiful tiled stairway, would compromise that historical integrity. These steps have served as a gateway to the many civic, social, and religious events that the building has played host to. Its theater is the centerpiece of sunny City Place. The city loses a sense of identity when it erases its past, so I'm asking you, as our representatives, to protect our heritage by honoring that pass by favoring historical designation. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Marjorie Ansura?
Marjorie Ansura, West Palm Beach. I want to correct two things. I, I was the one who appeared before the Historic Board, and I did not ask them to designate, I asked them to initiate the application process. And that's what they voted unanimously to do and instructed the staff member, the Historic Planner, to do. So I just want to set the record straight on that. I was there, I was the one, you know, making the request, and I know what I requested. In fact, it's in this book what I said. I'm here to request that the Mayor and City Commission allow the West Palm Beach Historic Preservation Board to undertake the process, to write a nomination application to designate the former First Methodist Church of West Palm Beach, also known as the Harriet, as an historic and/or landmark property in order to protect it from substantial change or demolition. This is vitally important, not only to protect the historic building during the current times of high redevelopment pressure, but for all times, so that both the current and future owners will have to retain this architectural gem in the heart of our city, which is also a major part of the cultural and social service soul of our great city. Under the city's code, eligible applicants for historic or landmark status may be initiated by the Historic Preservation Board. That's why I appeared there on April 23rd and requested that they begin the designation-nomination process, and they unanimously voted to do so. In my presentation, I said that I had documentation that I would like to provide. Here it is. When I contacted the City Historic Preservation Planner to deliver this physical evidence, he told me that the city administration had told him not to move forward with the application. I have in my hands a three-inch, more like four-inch maybe, notebook filled with documentation as evidence to support this historic landmark designation. I know it's a quasi-judicial board, you have to have evidence. We have the evidence on every one of the particulars that you need for historic designation, and you don't need all of them to make it historic. The documents, and the, in the documents, the building qualifies as a 50-plus-year-old building of significant architectural character, lists its many notable members, including eight mayors of West Palm Beach. We have the Anthony family here, their dad was mayor twice. From the 1920s through 2003, we had a mayor in every, from our church, in every decade except for 1980s. The document, it documents events that made a significant contribution to the broad patterns of the city's history and the lives of persons significant in the city's past. It includes qualifications for a landmark designation due to its outstanding cultural significance. Also included in the evidence is its long and positive impact as a social service soul of our community. The volume also includes more than 40 letters of support for the designation, along with photos and facts as evidence of how this church-
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. All right, I'm going to read off four more names. Start making your way toward the podium.
Who can I give this to?
Give it to the clerk, ma'am. Miki Isaacson, Candace Rojas, and Jeff Ansura. Erin Attis.
Good evening. My name is Erin Attis. I reside in Jupiter, 122 Royal Palm Circle. This urgent public comment will address the critical election risks and vulnerabilities our communities are facing in Palm Beach County. Our history is great, except for when it comes to voting, hanging chads and paperclips stuck into tabulators, SOEs that have been terminated and replaced by hand selections, intimidation, and non-American citizen voting, Zuckerbucks, and third-party interference. Currently, the SOE voter turnout results are way below 1968, which was 68%, resulting in greater civic response. If this election was an evaluation on voter turnout, then 22.23%, I'd say, Wendy, you're The town of West Palm Beach has approximately a population of 121,000, and 70,000 are registered, with 61,000 active registered voters. Compared to March, you've lost about 5,000 less today, active voters. The supervisor used 29 locations for 58 precincts. Yes, that's 2,303 per location, or 1,192 per precinct, and easy for a secure, simple, and accurate hand count. In my estimation, there is no way the SOE could even manage the current inefficient process of every eligible voter cast a ballot, it would just collapse. 9,743 votes total were tabulated for Commissioner Number Five. Congratulations. Thirteen precincts had less than 10 votes cast. This unsecure, early-voting machines, unreliable no-excuse absentee vote-by-mail, and unprotected YOCAVA military ballots, lack of chain of custody and transparency, costly public records requests are needed due to the lack of general results reporting, the use of symbols and a dash to represent a digit between 1 and 29 is blatant violation of Florida Statute 98.0981. Also, during the elections, a candidate PAC, party, or political committee may have designees for access to election materials. According to Florida Statute 101.572, these items were denied, and access was, was, we had none. The voted ballot was processed through the Blue Crest Machine by the staff and without any poll watchers. As of, as of February 5th, the SOE began to process vote-by-mail ballots. 30,000 were stored until February 28th, when the first envelopes were opened and tabulation began. 1,033 per day, seven days a week. Imagine, every municipality has a clerk, and that clerk is responsible. We are seeking decentralization of ballot tabulation, vote regression, regress of our multiple grievances pursuant to Florida Election Code 104.43 and Florida Statute 905.33. Please check your, make sure your-
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Party hasn't changed.
Thank you very much. Miki Isaacson?
Good evening, West Palm Beach Public Servants. My name is Miki Isaacson. I am a Palm Beach County resident. I, like many others, believe the 2020 election was stolen. I have been observing our local elections at the Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections for the last two years. This is not about Democrats or Republicans or any party affiliation. This is about stealing our elections. As a sovereign American, I am seeking a redress of our multiple election grievances pursuant to Florida Election Code 104.43 and Florida Statute 905.33. I am asking you to read and support the documents that will be handed to you today that include a request to convene a grand jury to investigate the '22 and '24 elections. Did you know our supervisor of election was appointed, tapped in by our governor, and then she changed her party affiliation before running in the following election? How many other leaders are tapped in, selected, not elected? The SOE employs temporary staff who have not taken an oath to the Constitution, and they yet touch and count our ballots and votes. The SOE is certifying our elections with dirty voter rolls, there is no chain of custody for the ballots, and the SOE allows the U.S. Postal Service to tamper with our U.S. mail, which is a federal offense by using postal bins to transport the ballots. We, the people, are awake. We are appealing to all 39 municipalities in Palm Beach County to remove the illegal organizations and agencies that you pay into. Palm Beach County belongs to a charter county. The Palm Beach municipalities belong to Florida Leagues of Cities, who belong to the National League of Cities, and all cities pay into ethics and commission agencies, and yet not one is looking into the election integrity concerns from we, the people. As all the, these agencies are illegal, they are tied to the crown that is a one-party rule from the top down to the states. I would urge you city council members, leaderships, and residents to insist on a tour of the new supervisor of election facility, where all the USBs, this is where your votes are, on this USB, you plug it into a computer, you can change this on any screen, you can change the vote. The facility was moved in the middle of a presidential election, and many of the grassroots have requested a tour, and we have been denied. I would urge all of you to take the tour and make sure our elections are secure. That's your job as the municipality leaders. It's your job to protect our elections. At one time, you guys were in charge of handling the ballots. The clerks were in charge of counting the ballots and storing them and, and making sure the voter rolls were clean in your own municipalities. That doesn't happen today. And I, our current government's 90% too large, and we, the people, demand that we, that you follow the U.S. Constitution, our Bill of Rights, and the Declaration of Independence-
Thank you very much.
-as it was originally written.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Good evening.
Candace Rojas?
Good evening, Public Servants. I reside in Boynton Beach, Florida. West Palm Beach is one of the most vibrant coastal communities in the nation, managing an annual budget of $711 million. Wow. I'm certain that there are well-intended, good leaders here, but regardless, I must speak boldly to intercede for those without a voice defend the Constitution and restore our republic. What I'm about to say may seem shocking to many of you who only watch fake news and believe the lies that everything is fine. I personally believe the military is the only way because our entire political, judicial, and governmental system is totally broken. Our elections are not secure, and our leaders at the local level have ignored evidence of election vulnerabilities right here in Palm Beach County. Whenever a government becomes destructive, it is the duty of the people to abolish it. As a sovereign American, I am here to put you all on notice, request your oath and bonds. We are seeking a redress of our multiple grievances pursuant to Florida Election Code 104.43. I have notified the military. We are visiting all 39 municipalities in Palm Beach County. The Constitution states that all of the power, not some of the power, belongs to we, the people. It also states that fraud vitiates everything ab initio. There is a systematic destruction of the old guard, a paradigm shift taking place all across the nation, a clean, a house cleaning of sorts. No more generational political nepotism, no more secret societies controlling the masses, no more appointed board members via the tap from secret society handshakes. The fake facade of power and control from fake leaders is over. Did you know that Palm Beach County is an illegal foreign corporation called the Palm Beach Charter, and West Palm Beach is part of that charter? Also, West Palm Beach is a member of the League of Cities, which is a globalist organization with connections to the United Nations and World Economic Forum, criminal cartel, whose primary mission is population control. This tells me you all need retrained. Be prepared for 1776 global peace and prosperity about to happen soon. West Palm Beach officials are not following the Constitution or common law. Instead, you are using fake statutes and maritime law to penalize the people when statutes were intended to control elected officials. During March 2020 pandemic, Scamdemic, some of you may have even committed crimes against humanity by locking down people, closing spaces, and businesses. We have not forgotten the tyranny and treason that was committed in 2020. We, the American sovereign, do not trust the current election process, and we are seeking regress. We advise you to take back your power by holding your own elections here at the local-
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Jeff Youngura?
Yes, my name is Jeff Ansura. I'm a resident of West Palm Beach for 47 years, and I'm here tonight to request that the city administration allow the Historic Planner to prepare the nomination for the Harriet Himmel Theater, the building, considered for designation as a historic slash landmark property. All around in the downtown area, I see cranes and new buildings going up everywhere. Growth is inevitable, and conscientious and thoughtful growth is essential to a vibrant city. However, I implore you to save the architectural integrity of the Harriet Himmel Building. Don't allow the historic building that has played such a large and important role in our city's past be changed or altered to accommodate a tenant or slash business that may be here today and gone tomorrow. Please preserve the architectural gem of this building. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to read off, read off four more names. Please start making your way toward the podium. John Rothberg, Isabella Gonzalez, Mark Barbien, and Satima Fowler. Mr. Roth, John Rothberg.
I'm going to yield to Mr. Dollars.
No, we don't yield time. If you don't want to speak, you don't speak. So it's no matter giving your minutes to anybody else. So you don't want to speak, sir?
I would.
All right, thank you. Isabella Gonzalez?
Hello, my name, hello, my name's Isabella Gonzalez. I'm from West Palm Beach. I'm born and raised here. I am talking, hello, Commissioners and city staff. I would like to request that the city comply with the Historic Preservation Board for historic designation report for the Harriet. Per City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Code, Chapter 94, Section 9448B1, of the City of West Palm Beach Zoning and Land Development Code clearly states that the Historic Preservation Board is an eligible applicant and may initiate an application. Sections 94-C1 and 94-C13 state that the Historic Preservation Planners are to assist in the preparation of complete applications and assist the board in carrying out any of its powers and duties. If not the City Historic Preservation Planner, who is supposed to complete an application for nomination? I strongly encourage city administration to comply with this request, and I ask you Commissioners to do the same, and do what's best for the community and mine, not dollars first. Thousands of people have shared their intimate, unique histories regarding this building, from weddings to using it as a shelter for refugees to gala and theater benefits. This building- This building, this building is more than a food market or a tenant space to be cut up and allocated or misused. According to the city's Historic Preservation Ordinance, the city must prepare this designation report for the board to review. The board must examine findings of fact from a designation report to even determine if this building is eligible for designation landmark status. Where is an update on this? It's not on the May 29th agenda today. The motion was brought forth by a public citizen historian of the Harriet, which the board approved a motion to investigate at the last meeting on April 23rd. There must be a halt to all demolition of this building while it is investigated. The current permit submitted to the city for the interior demolition is currently still breaking the DODRI. The permit number is 240400638COM, building, and the buildings are public record, the plans. I urge you commissioners and mayor to stop the interior demo and to thoroughly review this building, the past agreements between the owner, investor, and the city, and to not break law that's already been coded already. The cultural use urges the second floor and retail on first floor to spill out into the plaza. That's why twenty-five years ago, with Bellagio added, it was an intention for the city to have everybody come out of the building and go into the main plaza of City Place. The current approved plans and permits being acted upon right now are plans to gut the whole interior into a hole with future tenant space, not cultural use on the main floor. Removing even just partial parts of the stairs and doors on the exterior does not celebrate the Mediterranean revival historical design in a dignified manner. That is part of the Secretary of Interior standards. That is what it has set out as a standard to respect, which is already written into the law for this building, specifically last approved on January 24th, 2024, in the DL. Yet there is no designation. Why would this building need to be?
Thank you very much. Mark Barbian?
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioners. Um, I'd like to say what she said, because what she said is probably a lot better, a lot more accurate than what I have to say, but I'm here to support the initiative.
Please state your name and address.
Uh, sorry, it's Mark Barbian. I'm a resident of West Palm Beach here on North Flagler Drive. Um, I'm here tonight to support the initiative to set historical status for the Henry Himmel Theater. You know, it's easy to get up on a high horse and talk about all the great things that, that the city has done and that, that sort of thing, but I think if you take a look at the, the Harriet Himmel Theater, that possesses all the attributes that you'd want to have in something that would present, uh, protect our heritage. It's got culture identity and heritage, it's got educational value, it's got economic benefits, there's social community benefits, um, it's a place for civic engagement, and of course, it's got aesthetic and architectural significance. So I think, you know, it, it's incumbent upon us to, to sustain this thing, and, and it's environmentally responsible to keep this, uh, or to designate this as a historic property. So therefore, I'd like to ask that the city administration complete the historic designation report and that they get it over to the Preservation Board so that it could be discussed and approved. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Satima Fowler?
Good evening, Mayor James, and Commissioners and City Administrators. My name is Satima Fowler, and I am here as the president of the West Palm Beach Downtown Neighborhood Association, and I'm here to address the future of the Harriet Himmel Theater. Um, the DNA typically refrains from taking formal positions unless there is a significant outcry, and we have that now, and so the DNA has issued an official position that I would like to read to you for your consideration. The West Palm Beach Downtown Neighborhood Association, also known as the DNA, enthusiastically embraces the vision recently communicated by the owner of the Harriet Himmel Theater, the related company, that the iconic, quote, "iconic structure" should remain a focal point, quote, and also share the owner's commitment, quote, "to respect the architectural significance of the building and once again make it a vibrant community destination," quote. Downtown is fortunate to have such committed property owners. The DNA eagerly anticipates collaborating with the related companies to preserve the building's legacy and restore it as a vibrant destination for generations to come. After recent announcements by the owner of the Harriet to carry out extensive alterations to the building, and the West Palm Beach Historic Preservation Board's recent nomination of the same to the, to be historically designated, the DNA conducted a community-wide survey to gauge the public sentiment. The results show overwhelming support to pursue historic designation for the Harriet to protect the iconic structure for future generations. Therefore, the DNA respectively urges the city administration to adhere to Chapter 94, Section 94 dash 48 of the Zoning and Land Development Code, requiring that any changes to the building be approved by the Historic Preservation Board while the building is still under consideration for historic designation. To minimize delays and costs for the owner to redevelop the property, we urge the city to expeditiously complete the required historic designation report for the Preservation Board's review to determine whether the building fulfills historic designation requirements. If determined that the Harriet is not eligible for designation, then the DNA urges the city administration to uphold the current applicable zoning law, Resolution Number 90 dash 23, which already includes a special provision for the Harriet. The law stipulates that, quote, "the main hall of the historic church, now known as the Himmel Theater, shall be rehabilitated according to the Secretary of Interior standards and include a cultural use." So in closing, um, that is the official statement, so in closing, I ask you city leaders to expedite the historic designation.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Alright. I have five more cards. I'm gonna read these names out. Please make your way to the podium. Nikla Demilio, Aaron Clemmons, Nancy Pullum, Mike Schmidt, and Sanford Schuman. Nikla, Nikla?
Hi, good evening. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Nikla Demilio, and I am a board director of the Downtown Neighborhood Association of West Palm Beach. I would like to read the most compelling comments we have received from the survey the DNA sent out in regards to the historical designation of the Harriet Himmel Theater building. I am very much in support of the city's historic designation ordinance. My favorite cities to travel to showcase the history, architecture, culture, and people of that community while balancing growth with modern design and infrastructure. As a fourth-generation resident of West Palm Beach, it is my opinion that we as a community have not done enough to preserve the history of the city to create a balance of the new while preserving the old. My grandparents met in the theater as children at a Sunday school, when it was previously a church, and ultimately married there, so the significance of this building is deeply personal and one of the last pieces of historical architecture in the city that deserves to be designated. The former Methodist Church, later becoming the Harriet Himmel, is an icon to the city's history and worthy of preserving. The architecture combined, combined with the role of the church played in the history of the city make it extremely worthy of historic designation as a link to the long history of West Palm Beach. To alter the church and its iconic architecture destroys those links and the character of the city. This building is part of the fabric of this area and deserves protection. Please preserve the history of First United Methodist on Hibiscus Street in West Palm Beach. I was a member there, and my husband and I were married there in nineteen sixty-one. It is an important piece of West Palm Beach history as it was established in nineteen twenty-six. We need to maintain our small city feel amongst all this development, and preserving, preserving historic buildings is one way to do that. Please help, help keep the charm of our lovely little city by protecting the historic buildings. The city will lose its charm and its identity if it doesn't take protective measures to make sure our historic buildings are maintained. This is one of the most important, well-known buildings in West Palm Beach. We must preserve it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Aaron Clemmons?
Good evening, Commissioners and Mayor Keith James. My name's Aaron Clemmons, eighteen oh one, North Flagler Drive, West Palm Beach, Florida, three three four zero seven. Well, my name's Aaron Clemmons. I'm president and founder of Save A Teen, the nonprofit organization here located in West Palm Beach. Our mission is to raise awareness for parents to adopt teens in the foster care system throughout the country, starting in West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County. Uh, we, we have a couple of updates for you guys today as well. Um, we came up with a new idea. Remember I talked about bringing back that adopt a child segment at the last commission meeting for Jim Sackett that it was adopted thirteen years old on? Well, we wanted to come up with an idea and say, how about we help the teens in the foster care system in the city of West Palm Beach and Palm Beach County, and maybe collaborate with the city and Department of Children and Families and Save A Teen and one private company per month for a three-minute segment on WPTV News Channel Five and bring back that segment and change lives in our own community and help those kids get families in West Palm and Palm Beach County. So it's a proposal, if you guys would like to help. If you guys have access to Bill Segal, the vice president, if you're listening, we'd love to have a meeting and chat with you guys about that, as well as, um, we also have a retail program I want to talk about to all the residents of West Palm Beach, as well as city commissioners as well. It's called our sixty forty program. It's a unique program. It's never been done in nonprofit history. We came up with it, we're allowed to do it, and what it is, is, for example, you have a hundred dollar bar bill or restaurant bill, right? And you, you say, the bartender or server says, when you get your bill, would you like to donate to Save A Teen, save the next generation of teens? What it does is you got a custom donation on your receipt, and what it does is they make that donation. At the end of each month, the businesses in the community as well receive forty percent of that donation just for having Save A Teen and raising money for us, and we keep sixty percent, which would incentivize them to have Save A Teen as their charity of choice for, um, raising money to help kids in the foster care system, food, shelter, housing in the city of West Palm Beach, teenagers as well in the foster care system, and help out shelters as well, Christmas time, have all presents and desirable presents and so on. So I really hope the businesses in Palm Beach Island, West Palm Beach, as well as Palm Beach County get behind this retail program. If you'd like more information, email me at aaron/saveatene@gmail.com, or go to www/saveatene.org. Make your donation today. If you're interested in becoming a sponsor of Save A Teen, uh, please contact us as well, or your company being part of what we're doing to change lives here in the city of West Palm and Palm Beach County. Thank you, Mayor and City Council, and thank you, um, residents of West Palm Beach for your time.
Thank you very much. Nancy Pullum?
Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. My name is Nancy Pullum. I live in one of the historic neighborhoods in the city and have for many years. I'd like to take a little bit of a different approach. Um, my grandparents came here in the early twenties, and my father and his siblings all went to high school on the hill and elementary school, and he worked for Henry Flagler for a time. Um, but they lived on Jessamine Street. How many people know where that was? It's gone. The one, it was heartbreaking to watch the neighborhood go down the tubes, if you will, in the crack crisis and what have you, with people fleeing the city. Um, and the only two, well, there may be a couple more, but two significant structures left are Dreyfus and this church. Otherwise, there is no history there. And it's, it's, one of the things we've found from preserving the historic neighborhoods and working so hard at it, and it wasn't always easy for those of you who might have been tuned in in the day, is it has increased revenues. Our historic neighborhoods are something that the city touts as adding character, being charming, um, a real lure to people, and it has increased the tax value tremendously for our city. And I remember the church as a little child. It was the one place I was ever in a wedding, sitting outside on the wall, waiting to be told when to go in. I mean, those are the memories people have, and to think that a whole segment, a large segment of our city can just be swept away is, is saddening and leaving nothing. Hopefully, the cemetery will still be there where my family is all buried, but, um, there's nothing wrong with having an evaluation, looking at the standards, and seeing what, where's the workaround? Nobody wants to stop progress, but is there some compromise? And can we keep our minds open to do that? And it won't hurt if it's already, as the gentleman said, foregone and too messed up. Well, the die is cast. If there's another way to approach this project, that's a win-win for the city. When we saw everything bulldozed and burned down and whatever over there, um, knowing that the resurrection of that area of the city still retained an iconic structure. Our churches in this community, some of them are quite old.
Thank you very much.
We'd like to save this one, too.
Thank you very much. Mike Schmidt?
Hello, uh, Mayor, Council, uh, fellow citizens. I, I, I just, you know, I don't mean to, you know, beat a horse to death here as far as this Harriet Himmel thing is concerned, but I just want to emphasize that, you know, I've lived in a lot of different places, and I'm sure a lot of you have, who are not from Florida, and there is, any real city enthusiastically tries to protect their historic properties. Any real city, even if they're a city that's kind of down on the heels, such as where I've lived. I've lived in Detroit, I've lived in Cleveland, uh, Youngstown, Ohio, which is certainly not the garden spot of anything, but even that town has some really cool architectural things that they zealously try to protect. And the only thing that kind of disturbs me about, uh, you know, the way this whole Harriet Himmel Theater thing is going down is it does not express enthusiasm on the part of uh, public officials, and that's the thing that's disturbing. And part of the reason for that is not, you know, just sentimentality or, you know, we just, you know, wish for the long, the, the, the bygone days or anything like that, but having a nice architectural mix of things, the old and the new, is really crucial to any real city that you've ever been in. And when you think about downtown West Palm Beach, how many cool historic buildings are left? I think people wouldn't be so, so up in arms over this if they're, you know, if we had like, you know, Boston or something like that, where there's like ten zillion historical structures, but how many? I mean, you can count them on, you know, I, it's, it's probably less than ten that are really of any, any, any note. So that's why people are, are concerned about this. And, uh, the other thing that's just a little disturbing is when the city attorney, and I, I, I hope that she's, you know, speaking inaccurately, but I assume she's speaking accurately, is that, uh, I have never, and I have personally purchased and renovated historical structures before, and I'm completely unfamiliar with any situation where a historical building, uh, it's been at the discretion of the owner to accept or refuse whether it gets historical designation. That is legally bizarre to me, I've never heard of it, and it's logically bizarre. So if that's the case, uh, that's a disturbing revelation that I have never heard until tonight. Uh, the other thing is that if we have an architectural review board, it's a little disturbing that this whole process of attempting to apply for, uh, you know, a, a review of what's going to happen at the Harriet, Harriet Himmel Theater, what didn't happen, uh, many months prior, and now all of a sudden we feel like we're kind of last minute Charlie's, and, uh, if, if, if this goes forward without getting a proper review, then that whole historic review board just seems to be a bit of a rubber stamp joke. I mean, let's call a spade a spade, okay? So I just urge us to give it a proper review. We're not anti-development, but let's give it a proper review. That's all.
Thank you very much. Sanford Schuman?
My name's Sanford Schuman. I've lived in West Palm Beach since nineteen fifty-four, um, when I was four years old or something like that. Um, I just don't understand the hesitancy of this, of the mayor and the commissioners to, to give this designation. Everyone seems to agree that it's a beautiful building, it has wonderful architecture. Telling me that it was changed in the past does not seem to be an excuse to just, okay, well, then I guess changing is good. I, I don't understand that argument. Um, as far as I understand, former mayor Nanty Graham is a little upset that she did not pursue making it an historic designation. Um, I know that, I remember once upon a time on a handshake, Jess Moody managed to get the city to allow Phil into the lake there, the intercoastal. They allowed Phil because he said, well, this'll just be a chapel by the sea, it's never, it's gonna be just a park area, it's never gonna be any kind of a structure there of any sort, but it was a handshake agreement, and sure enough, Bristol is now there. Um, and it was a beautiful place, if, and if you know what the chapel by the sea was, it was very nice. So I don't understand why we're trusting a handshake or just an agreement, and, and a totally different point is, seems, people seem to not think much about, oh, well, they might remove the stairs. I mean, can you picture the Lincoln Monument, the, the Lincoln Memorial without the stairs, or the U.S. Capitol without the stairs, or many buildings in Europe without the stairs? Those are not insignificant things. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We do have one card. She did not want to speak, but she wanted her comments raised from Harriet Janisch. Please vote to save the historic Harriet Himmel Theater and grant it historical status. The architecture is extraordinary and emblematic. It's a beautiful building. Its history must be preserved for us and future generations to enjoy. Okay. Those are all of the public comment cards. We will now turn to comments from the dais, beginning with President Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to, before I get into responding to the public comments here, I just want to just reference a few meetings that are coming up in the neighborhood. The Twenty-Fifth Street Improvement Projects Community Meeting is tomorrow, Wednesday, the twenty-ninth at five-thirty at the Ava W Mac Community Resource Center. That's fifteen forty North Australian Avenue. The following evening on Thursday, May thirtieth, from six to eight, there'll be a meeting to discuss the plans for North Dixie Highway from Quadrille to Twenty-Fifth, Twenty-Fifth Street at the Flagler Gallery, which is right across from where we are right now here at City Hall. And the next community police meeting will be held on Wednesday, June twelfth, at six-thirty at Gaines Park Community Center. And I'm, there's been two separate discussions this evening, and I'm, I'm dismayed that the group that was talking about our democracy left before any response. I think those comments were alarming to call for military intervention considering that democracy comes in waves and it's fragile, and it may not be a perfect system, but it's the best system in history, and we should be working to preserve it, not have military intervention in, in America. I'm, I'm really alarmed by that, and I'm saddened by it, and I'm always happy to listen to people, but I would hope that they would listen back, and I doubt that they'll listen to these comments, but for those that are listening, you know, review history and really think about things before you try to call for that. And I looked up at our, at our, also our history of our Palm Beach County Supervisor of Elections, and that office actually received national recognition for Election Administration Excellence in May of twenty-twenty-three, which I think is a very important piece of fact, not fake news, that we should be focusing on as well. And then to the commentary, I really appreciate all the commentary, and I've met with a couple of you, and, you know, I, I had my prom there. There's historical significance there, and I, I am kind of, you know, I, I did read the memo, and I understand, and I just, I guess I have a question for, to clarify of our city attorney. And so, once something's planned, a plan is settled as a planned development, Resolution ninety-four dash forty-eight has no further application or power over that real property once it's in a planned development?
Right. The section ninety-four-two-oh-seven specifically indicates that in the, in the event of a conflict between that regulation and the other of the land development regulations, that the regulations adopted under ninety-four-two-oh-seven apply. And in this case, the resolution that was adopted by the commission specifically spell out what the development regulations for the Harriet Himmel are. So in order to modify or change that, you would need consent of the owner to modify or change the development regulations that were adopted under ninety-four-two-oh-seven.
Okay. And I just want to go on record, obviously, that that doesn't stop anything, but I would hope, and I know that our staff reviews these things, those stairs are important, the elevations are important, the arcades are important, and standards two, nine, and ten of the Secretary of Interior standards should be met, and, and I would hope that. And I've also talked to representatives and the owner that want to keep and maintain that historical significance. So if we can't go historical designation route, I'm hoping staff continues with their review of these standards to make sure that this building stays as historically significant and that that frontage with the stairs and the arcades stay intact. Thank you.
Commissioner Warren.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just say a few things, and I'd like to start by congratulating all of the graduates here in Palm Beach County, from pre-K all the way up to our collegiate graduates. This is a great time, and I'm happy to see that so many people are moving forward in their, in their education. I'm looking forward to participating and delivering some commencement speeches at some of these graduations, and I hope that you're all continuing to encourage people to have excellence as it relates to education. This upcoming month of June represents Alzheimer's and Brain Awareness Month, and there are more than fifty-five million people who are living with Alzheimer's and, or other forms of dementia worldwide. And this is particularly significant to me. My grandmother did pass away. She, she came to dementia a couple of years ago, and it was probably the most heartbreaking thing that I've had to witness in my lifetime. So I encourage everyone to gain as much information as you possibly can and to support organizations within our community that are supporting those that are suffering. World Sickle Cell Awareness Day is June nineteenth, which is also Juneteenth, and it was, June nineteenth was deliberately selected as the day to recognize sickle cell disease globally by the United Nations, and it is intended to be an opportunity for people to learn, learn more about this debilitating disease and to, to support the people in the community that suffer from sickle cell. There will be a Juneteenth event that is being held by the Sickle Cell Foundation that will take place in Wellington on June fifteenth. From five to ten P.M. is a free community event that is being offered. And I, I would just like to acknowledge that through attrition of the elected body, which we know that attrition is something that, that happens naturally, it's something that happens by necessity, there's a lot of information that is lost from person to person, just that, just as it is when there's information that's lost from employee to employee that leave an organization. I think it's very important that we ensure that all historical data related to amendments are made available to the voting body so that there's sufficient information to make informed decisions whenever those types of ordinances or revisions come before us. So I think it's important to note always that from, from an elected official perspective, the history of how we got to where we are is important so that we can make the best decisions. And I think it's also important that we don't make assumptions and that information is well documented and included so that successors always know where we are and where we stand when decisions are made, and that puts them in the best position to support why decisions are made and to ensure that the public is represented and that that information is passed on from body to body, because we know that attrition, again, is natural. And again, just the continuity of information, I think, is important. And that's all I have to say about that. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lambert.
Thank you. I want to thank everybody who cares so deeply about our city and our historic buildings and our neighborhoods. I know that I believe that preserving our history and making that a priority should continue to be a priority of not only the commission but our city leaders to do everything in our power that we can to preserve that history and protect our historic neighborhoods that we're so proud of. I also believe that preservation doesn't have to conflict with modernization, and in fact, I believe that blending the two together can sometimes allow us to preserve our history while, while ensuring that our future is also secure. So my commitment to you all, and, you know, on this dais and as my role as a city commissioner is to continue to encourage the building owner and the city to continue following the laws, to do what we can to protect the Harriet Himmel Theater, and I believe that we should keep this process going to find a plan that ensures that the public has access to and the ability to use the building so that future generations can enjoy all that it has to offer. And I heard one of our speakers state so eloquently, "A vibrant community destination," and I think that that is what we all want to see and that what we can do as community leaders and as city leaders to ensure that this process is moving forward. I also have a few other additional comments. As we're gearing into summer, as was mentioned by graduations, I know that sometimes we've seen some kids who maybe have a little too much time on their hands riding bicycles in the streets and causing a lot of havoc and sometimes doing things illegally, riding illegally in the roads. And so I just want to pass along some information that our police department has shared with us regarding this, is that if you observe these bicyclists acting reckless in the roadway, you should do the following. If possible, slow down and pull closer to the shoulder of the road and let the group pass. Avoid engaging them in conversation. Call the police department to report the reckless activity. Our non-emergency number is eight-two-two-one-nine-zero-zero. Provide a description of the violators and their direction of travel, and if anyone is struck by a vehicle or the group becomes physical, please call nine-one-one. It's just important that we keep our neighborhood, our, our residents, and our visitors safe. And then finally, I got to participate in one of my favorite activities of the year, which is high school graduation at Forest Hill High School. Our future is very bright. I got to shake hands with over five hundred young adults who are excited about the future. It made me very proud of the work that we do on this dais to ensure advanced education opportunities as well as housing that everybody can afford so that these graduates, if they go off to school, that they can afford to come back here. And want to say congratulations to my stepson Noah, who also graduated from high school and will be going off to Tallahassee in the fall. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you to everyone who is here tonight. I appreciate that you all care so deeply about the Harriet and about preserving the charm of our city. I also agree with you that that is, should be a top priority. I think one of the residents mentioned tonight that he didn't think that we were showing enough enthusiasm regarding this process of preservation, and I can assure you, at least on my behalf, that is not the case. You know, for all the calls and emails I've received, I've also spent many hours talking to city staff and the city attorney trying to understand what are, what are, what are, what the process is moving forward, what, what are the things that we could be doing. I think what I heard tonight that she mentioned, owner's consent would be needed in order to historically designate this building, but also that we require any renovations have to follow the U.S. Secretary of Interior standards, and that has been the case for, since nineteen ninety-nine when Related has first been working on this building. And so I have only, I can only believe what she says. I'm not a lawyer. I, I've read all the documents, and I think that there's some discussion, I think what I've heard some, from some of you about whether or not the way to interpret it is the correct way, and I am following what our city attorney is, is mentioning. And so I will do everything I can to ensure that we continue to have, have as much, as much input as we can in terms of what happens to this building, but we have been assured that this, there's no demolition happening, and in fact, you know, some of the stairs, I think that's one of the discussions tonight, those are not the original stairs, and I think one of the things that they plan to do in the future is to make them a more ADA compliant entrance. So I, I do want to thank you all for coming, and those of you that have sent emails or calls that cannot be heard tonight, I, I do want you to know that I'm listening, but at this point, I believe that it is not up to us to be able to designate this historically. So I think what we can do is try to, to shepherd this going forward to make sure that we have, we prioritize following the interior standards in the best that we can. But I am always open to hearing from you again. Feel free to call and email anytime, and I do appreciate that you all spent the time to come out tonight because I know that there's a lot of other things you could be doing, and that only shows how much this means to you and how important it is. I live probably a hundred feet away from this building, and I probably haven't been inside in about ten years, and so one of the things I do look forward to is having more active uses. I think there used to be reasons that I could go in and events and things like that. I think in the future, it would be nice that it's not only the centerpiece of city place, but that there are reasons for people to also go inside and have things to do. So I hope that there's a way that we can all be happy going forward, but I do appreciate all of you coming tonight. I also wanted to mention that last week I was in the Netherlands. I think I mentioned it in our last meeting, that I was invited by the Dutch Cycling Embassy and the Miami Dade TPO to participate with, as two members of the Palm Beach CPA, to go to a bike immersion program in the Netherlands. It's one of the most striking things about it is that it's, most of their cities are built for cyclists and pedestrians. Everything is dedicated to separated bike lanes, making sure that there's, everything is safe for pedestrians and bikers in a way that I think the United States just prioritizes cars and traffic and not to say that we can't, we always have the, have cars in our city, but I think there's a lot of other things we can do moving forward to make sure that we have safer access for all users of our roads, and I look forward to working with you all to tell you a little bit more about my trip in the coming weeks, and that's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. I, I too want to certainly acknowledge everyone who came out and spoke so passionately about the Harriet Himmel. We appreciate hearing the opinion of, of, of our citizens, and thank you for taking the time. I, I want to reiterate that, Madam Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, the owner is obligated to comply with the Department of Interior standards. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, Mayor, and it's my understanding that staff is undergoing that review currently.
So, so those standards are, are, are pretty high, and I know that as staff reviews plans, they have that in mind. So there is a guardrail, if you will, that whatever is done there in that building has to comply with the Department of Interior standards, and, and so hopefully people will take some comfort. And I think as you see the plans, and I would encourage the owner to, to get that information out as, as soon as they can, as folks see the plans, as I have recently, that they won't be as, as alarmed. Anyway, but thanks everyone for coming out. I do want to highlight some work of our firefighters. I just want to tell this story. In the early morning hours of Friday, May seventeenth, several fire and rescue units were dispatched to a serious FEC train incident involving a fire near Clematis. You all may have heard about this. An impaired driver of a passenger vehicle drove around the downed train gate into the path of an FEC freight train. The driver escaped, however, the freight train struck the vehicle going approximately forty-five miles per hour. The vehicle was immediately engulfed in flames resulting from that impact. With fire directly impinging on a tank car of compressed natural gas, firefighters aggressively attacked the fire. The conductor and engineer made the critical decision to move the train forward so that the gas car was a safe distance from the fire. So I certainly want to thank West Palm Beach Fire Department, FEC Engineer Willie Bromwell, and conductor Wallace Allen for their quick thinking and action regarding this dire and extremely dangerous situation. Because of their acts, a major disaster was avoided, so congratulations and nice job to all involved. Couple reminders, all young adults, fifteen to twenty-four, who want to join the movement for a more sustainable future in West Palm Beach. If there are any out there that are ready to act on climate change and help the environment, please, through a grant from Bloomberg Philanthropies, youth and youth-serving organizations can apply for a grant of up to five thousand dollars to support actions that focus on environmental change. For complete details, including important dates regarding the Youth Climate Action Fund, please visit wpb.org/green. Wp.org/green to find out more about the Youth Climate Action Fund. I can't emphasize this enough, but a reminder, hurricane season starts later this week on June first and runs through November thirtieth. To help you get prepared, starting June first through June fourteenth, you will be able to take advantage of the week-long tax exemption on items like generators, batteries, and flashlights. Please visit wpb.org for helpful information and a hurricane guide. I know there are a lot of people who are new residents of, of Palm Beach County and West Palm Beach who have probably not undergone through a hurricane, knock on wood, they won't have to in any near future, but, so it's so important to take all of these warnings and, and, and preparation seriously. The best time to prepare for a hurricane was actually yesterday. The best time to prepare for a hurricane was actually yesterday. So please, everyone, do what is necessary to prepare. Also, I want to remind everyone that June is Pride Month, when the world's LGBTQ+ communities come together and celebrate the freedom to just be themselves. Pride gatherings are rooted in the arduous history of minority groups who have struggled for decades to overcome prejudice and be accepted for who they are. Memorial Day was yesterday, a U.S. national holiday and a day of remembrance to honor those who made the ultimate sacrifice while serving in the military. We must all remember that freedom is not free, particularly in light of some of the comments that were made from the public earlier. Please cherish our democracy. That's all I have. God bless you. God bless the great city of West Palm Beach. Good night, everyone. Thank you. This meeting is adjourned.